Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the City of West Miami. First ever virtual Zoom meeting. This is a special emergency commission meeting. Today is Monday, April 13 at 9:04 a.m. And because this is a special Zoom video conferencing, I'm going to ask my city clerk Anari Gonzalez to read the out loud the link for the public to join the Zoom meeting. Anari, please.
Good morning. These are the instructions to participate in the virtual commission meeting. The city commission meeting will be held as a virtual commission meeting with elected officials and city staff participating through video conferencing. This virtual meeting will be held on the Zoom platform. Members of the public may join the meeting via Zoom Live remote public comments. The City of West Miami is providing live remote public comments. The person wishing to submit the live remote public comments will appear live on the TV screens in council chambers during the meeting and will be afforded three minutes to speak. You can test your connection to Zoom by clicking on the following link. Please submit your first and last name and make sure that you have working microphone and a working webcam so you can participate in the live streaming of the meeting. We thank you for participating in this service and ask you to please wait patiently for your turn to speak. There are instructions to access the virtual commission meeting by phone. First dial any of these phone numbers within the United States.
Wait, I'm not here.
I think I need to froze.
Hello?
Hello?
I think I need to froze.
Administrator, administrator, accept and give you access to the meeting. Please know that Governor DeSantis Executive Order Number 20-69 suspended the requirements of Section 112.286 Florida Statute of the Sunshine Law that according to be present in person and that a local governing body will meet a specific public place. The executive order also allows local governments bodies to use communications media technology such as telephonic and video conferences for local government body meetings. That concludes the instructions, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
Yeah, I got, I got a suggestion before we go on. If anyone that is not talking, they can turn off the microphone and that will eliminate the, the background noise and the feedback and we'll all be able to hear better.
We are already.
Okay, order, Madam Mayor. Hello? Everybody's frozen.
This meeting, okay, so now that this is exactly when I. Yes, sir.
Hello? Madam Mayor, you're frozen. Madam Clerk, you're frozen.
It's connection to City Hall, obviously.
Hello?
Quintana? I think that. There we go.
Mr. Q, we keep losing internet connectivity. At least I do. This is the second time I've lost internet connectivity. Can it, please raise your hand if you've lost internet connectivity throughout this me, twice during this meeting.
Think is you, Madam Mayor, and the city manager and the city clerk.
Okay, so it's apparently here onsite. A chief, have you lost internet connectivity through, in this, during this meeting? You shake your head? No? No, okay, so I did, Anari did, and the city manager did.
And Luciano.
And Luciano, okay.
But we have cure this, we have cure this, Madam Mayor. May I have a point of order, please?
Yes, sir, you may.
Okay, in addition to what the clerk read, we have six dedicated lines for people to call in. And when you connect with a machine and ask for a meeting, then dial 325-532-6259, followed by a pound sign. And now may I suggest that the clerk calls the roll call.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to do some housekeeping first before we get, before we do that and we are going to. First of all, as Commissioner Blanis stated, I need everyone to go on mute until you're ready to speak. When you are ready to speak, I need you to raise your hand to conduct this meeting in the proper fashion, just as we would do here in chambers. And for the sake of clarity, because if we all, if we're all talking at once, there's no way anyone's going to be able to know what we're saying. And also, please, everyone stay on camera. Please try not to leave your seat unless it's an emergency so that we are all visible to each other during the meeting. I'd like everyone to know that we are not wearing masks during this meeting because we are all either in our private offices. I'm here in chambers alone. Once we leave, we exit our offices. If we're at City Hall, please be sure that we do put on our masks. Thank you. With that said, Madam Clerk, roll call, please. I'm sorry, no, first of all, my, my mistake. We have the Pledge of Allegiance first and foremost on our agenda today and it's, I think, quite fitting that we all say the Pledge of Allegiance together today. So, Pledge of Allegiance, I will lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Item two, roll call. Mayor Ronder Rodriguez. Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez. Vice Mayor.
President.
Commissioner.
My hand.
Blanca.
President.
Commissioner Juan Blanis.
Present.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Write up, please.
Item three, public comments. And as of this, after this time, Madam Mayor, we haven't received any email or call in regards to public comments.
Thank you. I need, I'm going to ask everyone to go on mute because I am getting background from someone. I'm not sure who, but please mute your microphone until you ask to speak. Everyone, go on mute, please.
We lost you, Madam Mayor.
I need you to mute your microphone. Commissioner Blanca, please mute your microphone. Mr. Attorney, mute your microphone, please. Commissioner Suarez, mute your, thank you. Beppe, mute your microphone, please.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. All right. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item four, under special agenda items, item four A. This is a resolution with attachment of the City of West Miami, Florida, in accordance with the Florida Governor's Executive Order 20-69, adopting rules of procedure for virtual city commission meetings that take place during the pendency of the state of emergency declared in Florida Governor's Executive Order 20-52.
Mr. Attorney, I believe this is your item, sir. Mr. Attorney, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can now.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, well, this is a rule of procedure that the, that the clerk already read. And this is a set of rules that establishes how we conduct a virtual meeting. So since the clerk already read it, it's for you to discuss it and possibly make a motion and the motion second and it will be set for approval of this approval. Is there any questions?
Does anyone have a question or comment on item four A?
And you want to call the question?
Mr. Attorney. I am calling the question, there are none. Does anyone have a question or comment on four A?
Move. They have it.
I have a motion. I need a second.
We need a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, on the motion by Commissioner Diaz-Padrón and second by Commissioner Blanis. Commissioner, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes!
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Can I vote yes?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda, please.
Item four B, a resolution with attachment of the City of West Miami, Florida, as authorized by Governor's Executive Order 20-52 to determine the time and method of administering oath of office of the elected mayor and city commissioners, determining the terms of office of commissioners elected on February 28, 2020, determining the methodology of selection of the office of the vice mayor.
Okay, this is a resolution that was presented to you all with attachments. And the attachments are the report that the city clerk made on February 28, 2020 to the Elections Commission. And then it has an attachment to my opinion of March 2, 2020, as to how we should determine the terms and mayor, vice mayor by lot. And what it was suggested is that, I think, manager Yolanda Aguilar had the idea together with Chief Carlos Javila.
I need a little bit more information than that, sir. Someone needs to either continue or clarify what you just said. Madam Manager, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning to the mayor, city commissioner, city attorney and all in attendance at this meeting. We had a conversation, the chief and I had a conversation because of the difficult moment in time that we're living in and how we can best provide a methodology, if you would, for the selection of terms of office and later on, the selection of the office of vice mayor. And obviously, we need to find a mechanism which is videotaped and aired publicly so that there we can meet all of our transparency issue and obviously, the open in sunshine government regulations. So that said, the chief and I discussed the possibility of getting three cups of coffee, small cups, and putting in two cups that contemplate the number four. And then the third cup would be a number two. Those cups would be, they will contemplate a note or a sticky pad, if you would, under the actual cup. At that moment in time, once the clerk prepares those two numbers, we submit the cups to the chief of police upstairs in chambers while he is videotaped by our IT department and of course, maintaining social distances and somewhat, if you would, of playing dominoes with those three cups. And we, basically, he's being videotaped as he changes the position of the cups. And then come 12 o'clock, in the order that the names of the candidates, in this case, which would have appeared on the ballot and that would be by alphabetical order, they will enter through the main door of the chambers, select a, one of the cups, each one of them, our re-elected commissioners would. In this case, the first person would be Commissioner Candy Blanca. The second person would be Commissioner Eric Diaz-Padrón. And the third person would be Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez. They will each select a cup. And as they come in, they will exit the back door so that we can maintain social distancing. At that moment in time, we will disclose to the public, to the general public, the outcome of the cups and the terms of office, the determination by lot. And then the determination of the office of vice mayor will be decided by the toss of a coin as it has happened numerous occasions throughout our election history in the City of West Miami. That concludes the, the recommendation, chief. I know you're on. Is, are there any variations from what I just reported?
No, ma'am.
Any questions, Madam Mayor?
I'm going to ask the table, one at a time. If you will physically raise your hand so I can see you and allow you the microphone if you have any questions or comments. Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, I see you've raised your hand. Go ahead, sir.
All right, I'm, I'm okay with it. Obviously, I would prefer a methodology that we don't have to send people into City Hall, given the nature of what we're dealing with. But I'm, I'm okay with it. If that is the only way that can be come up with. My preference would be a situation where we do not have to come into a physical building.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, either use, virtually raise your hand on the screen or physically raise your hand so I can see you visually. If you have a question, comment, or concern. All right, I'm going to ask you individually. Commissioner Suarez, do you have a question, comment, or concern on methodology that our city manager just explained? Commissioner Suarez, do you have a question, comment, or concern on, on the methodology that our city manager just went over?
No.
Thanks.
I don't have any question at this moment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Blanca, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns on the methodology that our city manager just went over?
No, I agree with that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Blanis, questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir, I see you, on microphone. On mute your microphone, Commissioner Blanis, so I can hear you.
Sorry, I just had some residents going by and waving.
Oh, I thought you were there to speak. Okay, okay, sir.
What am I supposed to wave about?
If you have any questions, comments, or concerns on the methodology that the city manager just detailed.
No.
Thank you, sir. And I have no questions, comments, or concerns on the methodology that the city manager just went over. Mr. Attorney, I am going to yield to you and your legal advice and expertise. Do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
No, Madam Mayor, all you need now, now that you heard from everybody, now you have, you have a motion and a second and a vote on it.
Okay, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry.
We need a motion.
I'm sorry, you are correct. I, do I have a motion on item four B?
Motion.
I had. Okay, I have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes, on the motion, Commissioner Blanis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Candy Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes!
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez, how do you vote?
I vote no. I am opposite today. First, general opinion of the lawyer, this is your attorney, my vote is no to resolution.
Okay, there's.
Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Attorney. Mayor Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Four, one, item passes. Four, a yes, one, no.
Now, you have to determine when you will schedule the time and place to determine the terms of office.
Mr. Attorney, if I may. Sir, there's an already agenda out with that. That has already been scheduled according to an agenda that I have in my hand. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
That's scheduled for Tuesday, April 14 at 12 noon. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct, Madam Mayor.
I, I also think we just said it in the resolution.
As part of the resolution.
Yeah, but, but when, when the city manager was making proposals, I thought that was incorporated into the resolution, given that it said right at time and place, even though it was already scheduled, the mayor is right. She said the time and place, she said at 12 o'clock, this will happen. I thought that's incorporated and we'll just vote it on.
So be it, yes, sir, it is.
Okay, so my understanding is that the resolution as a whole had been passed four to one, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Attorney.
Okay. Then the next item.
Madam Mayor, next item. Item four C, report by city attorney on the issue of appeal by Banyum Healthcare on denial of special use permit.
Mr. Attorney, I do believe that this is on the agenda at your request and this is your item, sir. So you have.
As you know, Banyum went out to the City of West Miami and they filed a petition for special use permit. That petition was examined by the Office of the Planning and Zoning. It went out to the Planning and Zoning Board. It was recommended denial. It then went to the commission. It was recommended denial. And Banyum filed a writ of certiorari before the appellate court. We have been diligently attempting to see whether we can have an amicable resolution. And we have received this letter from them, email from them on April 8. In light of the city expressed representation that it cannot litigate and pursue settlements simultaneously necessary to proceed with litigation. I repeat, they say that we deem necessary to proceed.
Mr. Attorney, Mr. Attorney, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm sorry to interrupt. I need everyone to mute the microphone, please. I'm picking up background from someone. Thank you, Mr. Attorney, please proceed.
Banyum has sent an email stating that it deemed necessary to proceed with litigation. Please confirm the date. The city will submit its reply brief and the, is signed by Rick Morgan, the attorney. Now, that means that they have elected not to continue negotiations and they want us to file a brief. The 11th Judicial Circuit Chief Judge Bertilasotto has extended all proceedings in this appeal on the June 29. So my report to you at this point is that, number one, the Banyum does not wish to continue any sort of settlement agreement and our response is due on June 29. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
That's.
I, I think the Commissioner Blanca needs to have a question.
Yes, but if I may, Mr. Attorney, point of privilege. I do believe this was just a report by you and there was to be no discussion on this item. Am I right or am I wrong?
No, correct.
Okay, then there is no, to be no discussion on this item. That was only a report requested by you to be on the agenda. Commissioner is your.
Attorney to my client is to advise my clients anytime that there is a, an emergency issue and I consider that this was an emergency since we have been attempting to reason and reach an amicable conclusion. However, they have requested, they want cease to negotiate and number two, they have requests for us to respond to the writ of certiorari.
Yes, sir, so there is to be no discussion on that, correct?
Right.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item five, good of the order.
I'm going to ask during the good of the order, Madam Clerk, have we had anyone from the public that has asked to speak? Have we got a phone call or an email from any public that wishes to participate in this virtual Zoom meeting?
No, Madam Mayor, not as of this time.
Okay, I have nothing for the good of the order. I am going to ask anyone to raise their hand if they have something for the good of the order. Either raise your hand virtually or physically so I can see you. Commissioner Suarez is the only one I see asking to speak during the good of the order. Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Suarez. My apologies, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, the point is that today is the 13th of the month and I suggest the defer, the renewal of the contract of the engineers and the city attorney, renewal, defer this until we can have a regular commission meeting. Because it should be, but that's my suggestion. A defer engineers and a city, a city attorney, a renewal of the contract until we have a regular commission meeting, a discussion.
You're asking to defer something that's not on the agenda, sir. I'm not sure what you're asking to defer. That item's not on the agenda.
Well, I asked the manager Friday to put it on the agenda.
Um, okay, let's see, I have, I have Mr. Penna. I'm sorry, no, I have, I have the manager with quest to speak. Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Yes, if I may clarify, I had a conversation with Commissioner Suarez over the weekend. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Suarez, over the weekend wherein he requested that due to the nature of the circumstances, that the ratification of the city attorney and city engineer, which would normally. that the ratification of the city attorney and city engineer, which would normally appear uh, the first meeting after you have a fully inducted uh, new commission or re-elected commission in this case, the items, both items be ratified. He requested over the weekend that this item be deferred and asked that this may be included in the, either in the agenda for today or the agenda for tomorrow. Um, so that's why the, the matter is being brought to your attention um, at this time.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Mr. Penna, you have a question, sir? Go ahead.
Uh, the August twenty fourth, uh, April twenty fourth, the harbor day is coming up on us. I need to postpone that also.
Do you need a vote to postpone that, Mr. Penna?
No, just so everybody is aware that we're gonna have to move it back.
Okay, we are all aware. Um, proceed with, with moving that back. Thank you, Mr. Penna. Uh, does anyone have any questions, comments, or concern on the information the city manager just provided to us?
Uh, just a comment, Madam Clerk, uh, you're taking notes on this and you're gonna have minutes on this proceeding, right?
Yes, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, Madam Manager, Madam Clerk, somebody tell me where we are at this point with Commissioner Suarez's um, request to defer something that's not on the agenda.
I will yield to, to the, the attorney's opinion. It's an item that is not on the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
I believe that Yolanda Yila said that it was not for today, but for tomorrow. Is that correct, Madam Manager?
That's what was requested from me over the weekend, and uh, it was uh supposed to, I, I talked to Anary very early this morning when I got here. And I advised her that we may have an additional item for the agenda tomorrow, however, we have a four-day rule that we need to observe as well.
You can waive that by majority rule.
Okay.
Move to object or approve it or?
We need a motion, yes.
One at a time, raise your hand, either verbal, either vis- visually or. Commissioner Diaz-Padron, you have your hand raised, go ahead, sir.
Um, yeah, tomorrow, the meeting for tomorrow, um, the we, we said that at twelve, we would be selecting the cops or whoever it was, um, are we having a commission meeting after that?
May I?
Yes, Madam Clerk?
That's, that's a special commission meeting and.
Mayor, I have a question.
Vice Mayor?
I have a question.
Please raise your.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor, I, I raise your hand, I know you have a question.
Mayor, 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 I have a question. I talk, I asked Yolanda for it.
Vice Mayor, I know you have a question. The clerk is speaking. I need us to speak one at a time.
Well, give me the microphone to me. Advise me when you got the microphone.
I will give the microphone as soon as the clerk is finished speaking. She has a microphone right now. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
The, the manager, the manager make a mistake. The manager make a mistake.
Vice Mayor, we're gonna speak one at a time. Please wait until I acknowledge you to speak. The clerk is speaking right now. Please, Madam Clerk, continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Diaz-Padron, in, in response to your question, this is a special commission meeting. It'll be a special, uh, virtual meeting, has been advertised already, and that'll be the commission meeting. One of the items will be the determination by lot of the office of vice mayor and commissioners pursuant to our charter, section three oh three D. So the whole procedure will be a commission meeting.
For, for us, for, logistically, I'm going in at what time? To do, to do the physical drawing, or I'm going in at what time?
At twelve o'clock.
And then when am I getting back to my computer to get onto the commission meeting?
That's, I, I was not taking that into consideration when the agenda was uh, published. And it's something that we gonna have to determine uh, 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 so right now. Because we do need time in, in, in order to get back to a computer, a phone in, 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 in order to participate in the meeting. Or since it'll take place at the commission chambers, it is my recommendation, maybe, this is it, uh, for your consideration, maybe taking the right distance, social distancing, participate at a meeting televised, uh, everybody, like the three commissioners in, in question, to separate themselves at a, at a, at certain distance and participate in chambers of the meeting.
No, I, I, I appreciate that, but I, but I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay, that's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And Vice Mayor, you, you have the microphone, sir.
All right. The miss, the manager make a mistake. I did not ask her the meeting today or tomorrow. I told her defer the renewal of the contract until the first regular meeting. Maybe a month from now, whatever was the time, but not for today or tomorrow. I ask her for a regular commission meeting, defer until the regular commission meeting can be done, the discussion.
Okay, there's, so, so there's no issue tonight, uh, today, Madam Mayor?
No issue about what, sir? What are you referring to?
There's no issue, since the Vice Mayor stated that it would be deferred until a month from now. There's no issue at this point.
Sir, obvious to me even before this, because that agen- that item is not, it's not an agenda item. So we're deferring something that wasn't on the agenda.
Then consider that as a comment.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, so.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, Vice.
What I, hello?
Yes.
What I told Yolanda, I told Yolanda defer the renewal of the contract until the first regular meeting. And the meeting of today and meeting of tomorrow, I do not consider a regular meeting. So when I told the manager defer until the regular meeting, I don't know when we will have a regular meeting. But I, I asked the manager defer until the regular meeting. That's what I am presenting to all of you.
Vice Mayor, if I may, there's nothing to defer because it's not on the agenda. So it goes without saying that that is not going to come up until a regular meeting, because it's not on an agenda. So that's.
I know. That's what I told you. I told you before. I told the manager Friday. I told you before.
Okay, so there's nothing to defer, sir. It's not on the agenda. It will come up whenever it's on the, on an agenda. It's not on an agenda now, so it goes without saying that that discussion will not come up again until the next meeting, if it's on the.
And I want to, I want to clarify to you that those contracts, it maybe are until the eighteen of April twenty twenty, and eighteen, eighteen of April twenty twenty will be next week. And I don't want to be automatically. Should be discovered.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anary, I mean, Madam Clerk, you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, uh, alternatively to the, what I've said before, uh, also, I would recommend maybe to conduct the determination by lot, take a, a break, and reconvene at a later date on that date for a, uh, the commission, for, to continue the commission meeting.
No, wait a minute, I do not understand that. What, what is it that you're recommending?
Okay, starting the meeting at twelve o'clock tomorrow on April fourteen, uh, proceeding with the determination by lot of the offices of the mayor and commissioners, and then uh, take a break and call back the meeting to order like half an hour later, an hour later, and reconvene the meeting for discussion and, and, and taking the items of, the rest of the items on the agenda. So the commissioners participating have enough time to come back to their computers, to their houses, to participate virtually in the meeting.
I apologize, but I just don't want, I do not understand.
If, if I can explain, if I can explain, the, the, uh, my concern, my, my question was at twelve o'clock, we are supposed to, me, Commissioner Suarez and Commissioner Blanca, um, we're supposed to go and select the cops or whatever it was, the lot. But it's also a special commission meeting, so my question was, if we're at twelve o'clock in city chambers selecting something, what time are we supposed to be on, on the camera at our computers for the meeting? This is a special commission meeting. So that's what the city clerk is talking about is, is when we're gonna appear in the camera, if we're also in city hall at that time.
I would assume that everybody should be in the camera tomorrow at, at noon.
And when do we select the lot?
Sorry?
So then when do we select the, the cops?
I think that pursuant to the agenda that the uh, uh, clerk has uh, published is tomorrow.
Right, but at what time?
At noon.
Yeah, but I can't be in two places at once. I can't be selecting the, the, the lots at the, at the ci- city chambers and in front of my computer in my house.
Yeah, I got a suggestion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Blanis.
Why don't, um, we do it all virtually? That way, they don't have to be there physically. You know, the camera can pan onto the cops. Cops will be numbered or lettered, and they pick one.
As long as I have six feet of social distance and everyone with a mask on, I'm fine with that. But I must have six feet social distancing and masks being worn.
Well, that's, that's what he's saying. I, I believe he's saying that, that uh, we have the same situation, but instead of going into city hall and picking it, it's live and you pick it from the camera.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, you did say virtually, sir. I'm sorry, you did say virtually. My apologies. Yes, my apologies. I was still going through my head what was said before. My apologies, Commissioner. I, I understand you now. Virtual. You're saying for the whole proceed, for the, for the entire, um, for the entire thing to be done virtually? As opposed to physically being at city hall?
That's what I said, yes.
Thank you, I, I totally misunderstood you. Anyone else? Commissioner Blanca has her hand up?
Yes.
Uh, Chief, you will be next, sir. Commissioner Blanca.
Okay, I would like to do it personally, no virtual.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanca. Uh, Chief Avila, go ahead, sir. You had your hand up?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, if, if I may, uh, if, if you do that lot, and this is just me giving my thoughts from the outside looking in. If you do it virtually, you, it will create confusion and at the end, somebody may say, no, that's not the cup that I meant. I meant the one on the right.
Uh, Chief, I believe you froze. I cannot, uh, Chief, you're frozen. You have frozen on the, on, Major, I see you laughing. Chief, Chief, hold that thought. You're gonna have to repeat yourself. Okay, Chief, you're live again, go. Chief, you're live.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know where I left off, but.
You left off? Just say the whole thing again, sir, please. Say the whole thing again.
In, in, in my humble opinion, if you try to do the picking of the lot, which, however you wanna call it, virtually, it'll lead itself to, for confusion, and later on, possibly, you know, issues of, I didn't mean the one on the left, I meant the one on the right, or I didn't, I didn't say number one, I said number two, look what's happened here several times. Uh, the, the, the video has frozen. So I think in, in an abundance of caution, and, and, and just for transparency sake, I think in person is the only way you can do this, where you will not have any, any kind of argument later on.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, I have a lot of hands. Come, I'm gonna tell you the order, I'm gonna call you. Commissioner Blanca raised her hand first, Commissioner Diaz-Padron was second, Major was third. So Commissioner Blanca first, Commissioner Diaz-Padron second, Major third. Go ahead, Commissioner Blanca.
I agree with the chief of police said. I would like to do it personally.
Thank you, Commissioner Diaz-Padron, go ahead.
Okay, that, so that's that. Um, I, I'm back to my original question is, just tell me what time, so we can publish it, I guess. What time I'm selecting at city hall, what time I need to be in front of my computer?
Hold that question, sir, please. We will get an answer for you. Major, you're next.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, going back to what the chief said, yeah, that's probably the best thing to do, uh, is to actually do it live and just maintain that social distancing. All we gotta do here is shift to the left, which means just be early. So do it an hour before, half an hour before the meeting. That way, everybody has enough time to get back to their virtual, to their computers. Just as a suggestion.
Thank you, Major. Uh, someone else wanted, had their hand, okay, uh, Vice Mayor Suarez. Vice Mayor, go ahead, sir. Anary, you'll be next. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I agree with Commissioner Blanca. We do personally, and remember, make it simple. Make it simple keys. Make it simple. We all, we are a couple of blocks from the, from the city hall. We come here, we do personally, don't complicate these things for, just for nothing. Please, I agree with Blanca, I mean personally, and I agree with the chief, me personally.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anary, your hand raised?
Yes, just to clarify, the meeting has been advertised at twelve o'clock. We cannot start a meeting an hour prior uh, that, 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 the, from the, from the time that it was advertised. Just clarification.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Manager, you have your hand raised?
Um, yes, Madam Mayor, and this is just a suggestion. We do the process the way the commission determines, obviously. Uh, and then maybe after that, you can um, take a few minutes break to allow everybody to go back either into their office, maintaining the social distance, or back home, or to their offices, and continue the meeting, sort of like, uh, uh, once you have all the commissioners come in person, select their cups, a determination is made, and you continue the meeting and give everybody a break, and you come back, and then you publicly disclose the outcome of the process. I don't know if that would be legal. Uh, Mr. Attorney may wanna time in on this.
Let, let, let me suggest something, guys. I mean, you don't have to, I mean, the idea is to have it public, so everybody can see it. One committee can come at a time with a mask before the chief and pick up a number, or a cup, or whatever. And that can be live. The commissioner leaves and the next commissioner enters, okay? And that can be live. And the third commissioner, the second commissioner leaves and the third commissioner enters, and that can be live. And after the determination of who's gonna get the two full-year terms, or those two can be done as you suggested by a, via a, uh, a, like it had been done before, and also be live. And everybody work their mask and keep their social distance. But the thing is that if you have, as the uh, uh, very well an apt uh, city clerk suggested, uh, you cannot advertise at twelve and start it an hour before, and then adjourn and do it again. So do it one at a time. The commission leaves, the next commission comes, and does it before the chief and before the mayor if they want to be. So nobody has any questions about the legality of, uh, the process. But I would suggest to follow. But I would suggest to follow as the able city clerks stated, that it should be done the way that it was advertised.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm okay with that, Mr. Attorney. My, my, it's not a concern, my only question is, if, 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 and this is really not, it's not a super complicated thing, I just need an answer so that we all don't have confusion tomorrow. After we're done picking the lots, what time do you, are we gonna do, are we gonna be on the camera in front of our screens like we are right now? At 12:10? Are we gonna do that, you know, at 12:30? I just need to know when you want me in front of the screen.
We do it immediately. I mean, you select by alphabetical order, who comes first, who comes second, who comes third, and the, before the chief. And that commissioner enters, picks up whatever the chief suggested, and that commissioner leaves. The chief will announce at the time the term that that particular commissioner selected. And the next one will come over and then the third. So it can be done simultaneously, one at a time, as the clerk suggested.
So, Mr. Attorney, are you?
Back and so on and so forth. So it, 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 it's a really very fluent way of doing it. You know? You do it right there before the chief, before the mayor. So there's no, the mayor and the chief does not have any, don't have any interest in one way or the other. So they could be a totally neutral referees. So, and of course, the clerk should be there. Yes, sir?
I, 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 I'm, I'm not, I'm not disputing the transparency of it. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, like, we're all right now on our computers in front of our screens, right? Is the special commission meeting, are, are, am I going to have to sit in front of my screen like I am right now at some point?
You might be at some point before the screen. What I suggest is this. The manager and the chief made a suggestion that everybody approved.
Right, no, I, I, I'm not disputing that, I'm asking, I'm asking logistically.
Okay, logistically. The chief will wear a mask and Commissioner Blanca by alphabetical order comes first. And then will select the cup or the hat or whatever. And then the chief will get out and will say, Commissioner Blanca selected four. So that would be the term of Commissioner Blanca. And then you will come in and you selected whatever, and that will be your term. And then Vice Mayor Suarez will come and that, that gets aired right there before chief.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't think, I don't think my question is, is, is being understood. Is, is anybody else understanding what I'm, what I'm getting at? I don't think I'm being clear.
Commissioner, I believe I completely understand what you're saying. May this mic clarify. I think the city attorney might be saying you will not be going back to your personal computer. I, I think he's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, that you will stay. Everyone will stay at city hall, obviously separate, in separate rooms. And then we will do the flipping of the coin here at city hall. So no one will be going back to their personal computers. Am I correct in that, Mr. Attorney? Is that what you're saying?
Whatever you choose, I mean, the easiest way Vice Mayor suggested would be the best. And it's all the determination of how, logistically is done. And you can go back to your personal computer later. And I formally announced that, that by the chief, Commissioner Blanca selects a year, and Commissioner Suarez selected a number of years, and Commissioner Diaz-Padrón selected a number of years. And after a coin was flipped, Commissioner Blanca, I'll be the Vice Mayor.
Okay, but that, that, that can't be later, so that's gotta be during that same meeting. It's, it's all gonna be done during the 12 o'clock meeting, so it can't be done later in the day.
I wish, I mean, it's.
Well, it's not as I wish, it's how it's counted, I have an agenda in front of me. We have to stick to the agenda.
You, you, you know what? We already set the time for the methodology and methodology. Why don't you guys figure it out and, and just advise us in the notice of the, of the meeting?
So we're gonna figure this out during this meeting right now. That, that is an agenda item on the meeting we're having now. So we will, we will figure it out together during this meeting as advertised. And Madam, Madam Manager, Chief, you will be next. Madam Manager, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, my point, my, my recommendation would be, and I mean, I think we're talking about the commission coming in one at a time, selecting their cup, doing the selection process, of course videotaping and recording all the proceedings. Would it be appropriate to have a 1 o'clock continuation to the meeting so that all the information can be publicly disclosed? Via a Zoom meeting?
If everyone agrees to that, I'm, I'm, I'm waiting for an agree, I'm waiting for a consensus here. I need a consensus on how we're going to do this.
Can we do that?
Mr. Attorney, Madam Clerk, someone? Can we do that? Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Usually when we have our meetings, we can take a break. We can call and call back the meeting back to order at a later time, like we usually do. We can call the meeting at 12 o'clock, proceed with the determination. After everybody has, has made their procedure, then we can take a break and call back the meeting to order at 1 o'clock. I've seen, we've, customarily, we've done that. So that's my recommendation, and I agree with the manager's recommendation to call back the meeting back to order at 1 o'clock.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, can you clearly let everyone know exactly what's going to happen tomorrow? In the order it's going to happen, the location it's going to happen, and the time it's going to happen? Once, once the clerk clarifies this so that we all understand, I'm going to ask everyone to say yes or no. Once it's set and once we agree, it's not going to change. Madam Clerk, how, when, where, why, go?
Okay, tomorrow at 12 o'clock, you, Madam Mayor, will call the meeting to order. This is the special meeting that has been advertised. At that time, the commissioners Diaz-Padrón, Candida Blanca, and Luciana Suarez will be at city hall. The rest of the, of the, of the attendance will be attending virtually. The chief of police will lead the procedure. I'll be present, taking a certain distance. And we will proceed with the selection of, as the, as the chief described of the cups. First, we.
If I may, where at city hall will this be taking place? Where?
In the commission chambers, in the commission chambers.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yes, and then Commissioner Blanca will be the first one. Then Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, and then Vice Mayor Suarez. After we have determined, or they have taken their cup, we will determine who will be serving for four years, four years and two years. And the ones for, the, the two that get the four years, we're gonna flip a coin. And that will be determined, that will determine the office of the Vice Mayor. After all procedure is over, we're gonna take a break to allow Commissioners Diaz-Padrón, Blanca, and, and Suarez to go back to their computers. And the meeting will be called back to order and we will reconvene at 1 o'clock PM, virtually.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Blanca, you have your hand raised, go ahead, please.
What is the emergency for another meeting after all that? The 1 o'clock meeting, why? Is it an emergency?
It's not an emergency, I believe it's. I believe it's a continuation of the same meeting.
It's an opportunity, it's an opportunity for everybody to go back to the computers. Not, it, it's just an adjournment, like the clerk suggested and like the chief suggested. It's just an adjournment, where everybody can go out to their own computer. And then, of course, the chief will announce the result and that will be it. I mean, there, there's no separate meeting, it, it's just a, a brief comment and so on and so forth. Go ahead, chief.
I think the information of what occurs at that selection of the cups should be reported to the clerk and the clerk be the one to go ahead and advise.
Thank you, chief. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Yes, in response to Commissioner Blanca's concern, it's not another meeting, it's just, what we will do is, my office will report the results. And, and basically, we will adjourn. It's just a matter of continuing the meeting, reporting the results of what took place at 12, 12 o'clock, and adjourning the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Does everyone clearly understand what's going to happen tomorrow?
Yes, yes, have a nice day, Mayor.
Not yet, sir. Does anyone have any, anything else on how it's going? Yes, Madam Manager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for the clarification and for the record and for the public. I think it would be a good idea to recap tomorrow's day, if you would. Just the, the time that the meeting is being announced, the process, not in its entirety, but how the selection will be made. And then how it's going to be deferred or continued until a time certain later on in the afternoon or immediately following the selection of terms and offices, just for the clarification of the record.
Madam Clerk, I want to hear from you in detail, in its entirety, exactly what's gonna happen tomorrow. Time, place, and participants. For the record and for the last time, unless anyone else has a question. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Would you like me to repeat the whole procedure again, or just the highlights of what time, place, and what's gonna happen?
I believe the manager was asking for a complete recap. Am I correct, Madam Manager?
Yes, ma'am, I think that would be good for the record.
And then I, I want, if that's the case, if we're gonna recap, I want it recapped in detail.
Okay, on Tuesday, April 14, a meeting, a special virtual meeting has been announced for the determination of office of Vice Mayor and Commissioners. At 12 o'clock at noon in the commission chambers, Commissioners Candida Blanca, Eric Diaz-Padrón, and Vice Mayor Suarez will be, will be participating in the determination of the office of the Vice Mayor and the terms. Coordinated or recommended by the chief of police, each and one commissioner will enter the commission chambers, taking proper distance. And first, being Commissioner Blanca, she will take, select a cup, then followed by Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, and then followed by Vice Mayor Suarez. At that time, the determination of the terms will be decided. So two commissioners will, will select four years and one commissioner will select two years. At that time, the ones that selected four years for that specific procedure, a coin will be flipped, determining then who's gonna be Vice Mayor for four years and who's gonna be Commissioner for four years serving, for, for years, as I said. Vice Mayor will serve two years as Vice Mayor and two years as Commissioner. And the other will serve four years as Commissioner. The one that selects two years will serve two years as Commissioner. After that procedure is done, we will take a break. The mayor will request taking a break. And we can then continue and reconvene the meeting at 1 o'clock, virtually. So all the commissioners participating in the determination can go back to their homes and to their computers to end where the city clerk's office will issue a report and the meeting will be adjourned.
Hey, let me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Attorney, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, at some point you have to go over the agenda. And you have to say, this is an agenda on today, the 14th, et cetera. And this will be the procedure. And then the procedure will continue the way that the clerk has just stated, okay?
Yes, sir, I will be calling that meeting as I do every meeting. I will open the meeting as, as I have done and will continue doing.
Everybody's in accord then.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I need either a virtual, actually, no, I'm gonna ask, ask one by one. I want it one by one. Commissioner Blanca, are you in agreement with the very detailed procedure that the clerk just provided us for tomorrow's meeting?
If all of my colleagues are, then yes, I am.
Okay. Commissioner Blanca, are you in agreement with the procedure the way the clerk just stated?
Yes.
Thank you. Commission, I mean Vice Mayor Suarez, are you in agreement with how the clerk just said tomorrow's meeting is going to take place?
I hope you do not repeat again. I agree.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, are you okay with the way the clerk just provided us tomorrow's agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney?
You have to vote, Madam Mayor.
I, 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 yes, I do, no, sir, I'm just, I want to get everybody's input. Are you okay with what was just said?
Yes, madam.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Chief? Chief? Chief Avila, you are, you will be participating, are you okay with what was just said? I can't see him, he's, I think he's, he's frozen.
You can tell her yes, ma'am, for me. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Clerk? That was an agenda item, so, okay, first of all, I need a motion.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Duly noted. Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez, how do you vote?
What is the vote for?
Item, item 4B, sir.
I've voted no before.
Uh, Madam, Madam Mayor.
At 4B, then what are we voting on?
On the procedure for, to take place tomorrow, that was part, it's a discussion during the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that is correct, good at the order. I stand corrected, I stand corrected. Please, please let Commissioner Vice Mayor Suarez know what he's voting on, I stand corrected.
Vice Mayor Suarez, how do you vote?
I voted in resolution A for B, I vote no. And the, and the resolution passed 4 to 1.
For the procedure? For the procedure taking. For the procedure, for the procedure taking place tomorrow.
I vote no for the, yeah, for the resolution, yes.
Vice Mayor, I was wrong. Not the resolution we're voting on, sir. I, I stand corrected. We are voting on the procedure that came up in the good of the order.
Would you? If, if you're asking me for what the system that you explained four times, I agree with that. Twelve o'clock, and then one o'clock, I agree with that. But in the resolution for B, I did vote no already.
So we're voting on the procedure, the procedure.
Yeah.
The mayor here already said yes.
Thank you.
I agree with the time and the way.
You vote yes. And Mayor Rodriguez, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, that's motion process.
Five-zero. The procedure for tomorrow is, is approved.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else before I adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn. If there is nothing else. I have a motion by Commissioner Diaz-Padrón. All in favor?
Aye.
During the meeting, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very, very much. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Likewise.